Yeah, now.
All right. All right, we're recording here too. Let's do it. All right, I'll call to order the Town and Mount Desert Planning Board meeting for December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, welcome aboard. And I'll start off with introductions. I'm William Henley, Planning Board Chair. We have Tracy Loftus Keller, Vice Chair. We have Meredith Randolph, and new members Alan Kimberly and Gail Marshall. And I don't have to do the Zoom spiel anymore, do I? Everybody knows to keep their mic off and 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 please sign in and chat if you can and um don't use chat as a side discussion and there we go. We all know the rules by now. And uh let's dive into it. So we've got a approval of minutes.
Is this for the? Yes.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October twenty-four.
I second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alan was not a participating member.
Oh, okay.
I'll second, just to, I don't know.
Thank you.
That's a very good point.
Thanks Heidi, keeping us on track. All right.
So three to zero in favor, correct?
Yeah.
Present.
Yeah.
Yeah, was it three to zero?
Yes. He, they were, they were present, but they were not.
They weren't.
And that's my only.
All right.
Thank you for paying attention to that.
All right, and then item two B tonight, we have approve and assign, approve and sign the decision and findings for the Hillway subdivision. And Greg, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Sure. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think um just want to thank the board and including Heidi for um seemingly impossible task bringing together a lot of work and a very concise and accurate document. Um, I have no reservations about the content of it. Um, and with that said, I would like to pass it to um Councilman, who I get, if I could say anything earlier.
Thank you. Daniel Bligh for the applicant, I don't have anything to add. Um, thank you for uh for documenting the October twenty-four vote.
All right. And we have Andrew Hamilton, the town council online here with us and Andy, you always have something to say. Um, care to add anything before we dive into the signing of the um final findings?
Yeah, I'll keep it brief. I found that Heidi and Kim um and the uh board um members that were participating throughout the Hillway subdivision review were incredibly helpful. Um, a lot of hours in drafting um the decision, but I think um it reflects the board's good work in reviewing what I counted up as seventy-nine review standards.
Right. Deal with every one of them.
Do we have an official clean copy?
I have it ready.
Yeah. And so what we're what we're doing here is we're um signing and voting on the boards um to accept the board's um final findings and decision on the review. And the chair and really um where Dave is not here, it's essentially us three.
Yeah.
And so I, and the chair should probably not be making
A motion.
Motion or seconding.
Okay. Um, so uh Tracy Keller, I'll make a motion to approve um the document called Town and Mount Desert Board uh Planning Board Subdivision Review and Approval Decisions with Findings Regarding the Mount Desert Three Sixty-Five Hillway Subdivision, which is application number zero zero two dash two thousand and twenty-three.
I guess she need to say of what specific you said that we're accepting the findings.
Yes, that we're accepting the board's findings and decision on that application.
I'd like to state that we are accepting the board's findings and decision on the application.
I second the motion.
And just let me press the pause button and Andy, are you okay with that motion?
I'm very fine with the form of that motion.
All right. All right, well then let's call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Let's sign it. Yeah, I'll echo, I thank you too as Chair, as everybody during the process and all the ups and downs and lefts and rights and, you know, I thought I remained professional and civil and, you know, we made it through, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think now that the conditions of the decision have been accepted, they'll be on the on the MyLar, which will bring in, I'll bring to the office and you need sign in passing, it should be tomorrow. Um, if it's a literacy next meeting, that's fine, but you have to sign it off now that we have their decision on the findings and the conditions. Uh, that plan will be in here, you can come in and sign it. It doesn't have to be next meeting, that's fine.
And is there a uh pen on hand for MyLar signing here?
They don't do MyLars anymore, they pay for copies.
Oh, okay.
So we need to extract the actual conditions at the end of that and make sure that's on there. And so it's codified how it actually do it. So um signing that will have to happen in the town office or the next meeting, but we call it the MyLar, so it'll be.
Do we need to, what do you want to do with this?
I'll say that. I'll get it.
Right.
Nothing going around in the table.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Thanks, guys. Yes, thank you Heidi, thank you Kim, thank you Andy.
You're most welcome all and have a good evening. Yes, best of the holidays to everyone. Take care and bye.
There goes everyone.
That was like the shortest conclusion in one of the longest reviews with that. Yes.
No, I really, the thing weren't all like that.
Yeah. Yeah, let me retract this.
Okay. Good night.
All right, item three. Got a little bit to read here. All right, tonight we have land use zoning ordinance section six B eleven, access to lots created on or after May fifth, two thousand and fifteen. What that talks about is that no lot created on or after May the two thousand and fifteen shall be built upon or otherwise developed unless it has a private road or driveway for access to a public way by valid right-of-way benefiting the lot or by ownership of land abutting the public way. If more than two lots excess by the same private road, then it must meet the street design construction standards of section five point one four of the subdivision ordinance. If no more than two lots are accessed by the same private road or driveway, then it must either um meet either the said street and design construction standards or the driveway construction standards of section six B six of this ordinance. A pre-existing primary access drive that serves up the two existing lots need not meet the requirements of section six B six. And all such lots must maintain safe access for fire, police, and emergency vehicles as determined by the code enforcement officer. In determining whether lots maintain safe access, the code enforcement officer may seek the guidance from the fire chief. And it goes on to say uh relative to the subdivision ordinance, subdivision ordinance section six waiver modifications of this ordinance, six point one point one says where the board finds that a private road providing access to a lot or lots cannot meet the street and the construction standards of five point one four because A, the application of land use restrictions would prevent the work requiring to bring the existing road into compliance, or B, the physical conditions of the site render strict compliance impossible, then the board may waive such standards. However, in all such cases, the board must find that A, the proposed plan brings the road into compliance as much as is feasible. B, the proposed plan will provide safe access to and from the property. And C, the proposed plan will allow for the access to the site for emergency vehicles. And with that, tonight we have property owners Jane E. and William F. DeRome. Agents uh Robert Foster, location is seven Vacation Lane, Mount Desert. Tax map seven, lot forty-five oh oh two. Zone is residential one and the purpose is request a waiver of the street design and construction standard in section five point one four of the subdivision ordinance for an existing private road. We had a site inspection at three o'clock. And was this one advertised and the butters?
Yes, it was advertised in the Ellsworth American and Mount Desert Islander on Thursday, November thirtieth. And uh yes, a butters were notified. Um, there were eight notices that went out.
Great.
And I may have lost the significance. Or a perceived one.
Perceived, all right, so are you asking for uh perhaps a recusal on this one?
I think it's sensible.
Okay.
Bob is my partner.
Got it. All right, so anybody care to make a motion to accept Meredith's recusal on this application?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Meredith.
Is there any hot issues in the other, or should I just go? No, that's it.
Just like that. All right, so we had a site inspection at three o'clock, see a Meredith and perhaps Gail would like to report on her observations from the site, site business.
Yeah. Um, this is a small um not too long line, somewhat winding lane, uh not paved lane that comes off from the Hawk Quarry Road. And winds around past a number of properties, has nice Christmas decorations this time of year. Um, and sort of dead ends at the property of the own the applicants. Um, and passes by Mr. Foster's home and a couple of others. And apparently it's, we had a conversation with Mr. Foster who was there. Um, there are any um, I'm not sure how wide the road actually is. It's I mean, it's, I mean, you know, it's not forty feet right away. We know that, or fifty feet right away. Um, it's forty. Um, but I don't know how wide the road itself is. It didn't look to be sixteen. And it may have been fourteen and a half, which is driveway. I I I don't, I don't actually know. Um, and as to how it was composed in terms of meeting the other requirements of the road, I I I'm not sure of that entirely either. Um, uh, we were told uh by Mr. Foster that he thought back in nineteen ninety-eighty or the eighties that he had split that lot off to be a separate lot already. And um it appears as though what may have happened is that his now deceased counsel um did not record the D showing that it was a separate lot. And if that perhaps if that had happened, then we wouldn't be in this situation because the lot would have been created long before two thousand and fifteen. Um, I won't go into the other information in the package about butters and so forth, but that you know, it's, it's just, it is what it is.
Yeah, I'll add that it's a you know, it's a meandering gravel tertiary road and uh, you know, there's no you know, dramatic topography or anything like that. And it seemed um uh you know, level and uh somewhat more open than some of the other waiver requests we've, we've seen. Um, you know, the road was in good condition, you know, there wasn't you know, mature trees hanging over it and it's looking and look like it was provided, you know, with easy access to the lots back there. Anything to add, Ellen?
It seemed uh typical for the area in Hawk Quarry.
Mm-hmm.
There's numerous, numerous ones like that.
Yeah, it was.
Branch off to small homes that are back in there.
Yeah, you had a good point to observing that like that area Hawk Quarry, you get these like little quarry walls and there's old quarry debris and that kind of thing. I mean, that's all right, well, Bob, I'll turn it over to you if you'd like to add anything about that or summarize the the application before us.
I don't have too much to add other than what we talked about over there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, all of the neighbors that signed the request really don't want the road widened out into a subdivision turnpike.
Mm-hmm.
Very comfortable the way it is. Mike Bender has approved the training, the the drums.
Mm-hmm.
And hopefully it will meet the standards that you set for.
Right. All right, I'll open it up for any public comment. Yeah. Do the drums have anything they care to add or? Yeah. Um, all right, going once, twice. Stephanie, y'all set?
Oh, yeah. It's fine, yeah.
Okay, good. All right, well then I'll close the public hearing and I think the first thing we'll have to do is um, well, we've already gone through the conflict such interest though. And then um uh need to have a vote to find the application.
No.
No? We don't do a vote to find the application?
No.
Complete?
No.
What happens if it's incomplete?
Then they would, then you would find that they would have to provide additional information if that's the case.
So now we just go through and see if it qualifies.
One, one, yeah.
Because we're just voting on the waiver, right?
Yeah.
Whether they can put the shed there.
Correct. It's the waiver request. So six, one, one of subdivision ordinance.
So I I have a couple of, I I I assume that what the anticipated addition is, from what we were told, is a a non inhabited, inhabited shed. Is that is that your understanding that we're not talking about adding more dwellings of this road?
Yeah, no, they're they would likely buy out the shed.
This is one of those situations that it seems to me that you know, the 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 nice and proper thing to do would be to grant the waiver. I I I need somebody to help me figure out how granting the waiver complies with six point one point one, because I think it has really strict language. And I don't think we can just roll over that because it's the thing that from a human point of view makes sense to do here. It almost seems like a no harm, no foul situation.
Mm-hmm.
But the language says we can first of all, that um, the private road cannot meet the street design and construction standards.
Well, then we, yeah, keep going.
And then, and I think cannot, I'm not sure that means because the neighbors don't want it as opposed to not physically possible, because if you read the rest of it, the application of land use restrictions would prevent the work required to bring an existing road into compliance. I can take quite frankly, I'm not hundred percent sure what that's saying. But when you go beyond that, so I'll set that aside for now. You go beyond that to the physical conditions of the site render strict compliance impossible. Then the board may waive such standards. Well, again, it's not that the neighbors don't want it, it's the physical characteristics of the site make it impossible. And I, I, it's not, it's not, it's like the toughest word I can think of them putting in that situation, not not improbable or troublesome or difficult or costly or unreasonable. It's in it has to, we have to find that it's impossible to comply because of the physical characteristics. And so I'm looking for help in figuring out how we can get to yes on this and respect the integrity of the language that we have to work with. So um I'm, I'm all ears.
Well, I would initially guide the board to the street design and construction standards of five point one four, just to put into context of what it should be, put what it, put in the context what it is relative to what it should be. And you know, and and so as you're reading down through five point one four and technically it's five point one, four point one, um where it summarizes, you know, like there's a minimum right-of-way width of fifty feet. They only have forty, minimum road width of sixteen feet, you know, the maximum grade of twelve percent, minimum center line radius one fifty, the minimum tangent between curves of reverse alignment. Um, you know, and on and on and on. Um, you know, we have had past issues where, or past waiver requests, like I'm thinking of the one um uh right here in the village over by, wasn't that over by the sewer plant, the water treatment plant? That um, it was, it was not necessarily a case of it being impossible, but it was a very, very similar case of a butters not wanting to widen the right-of-way width to fifty feet. And that was a, that was a considerable um uh plus for granting the waiver request. And then another primary consideration at that location was that they, you know, it was just a removal vegetation. You know, they had some mature, very beautiful hardwood trees lining the street going in. Um, they didn't have any challenging topography. They had, you know, it's, it was pretty flat over there going in too, but um, you had a, some, remember this one, the, you had like a summary of some key points, not all of them, that steered the board towards the waiver.
And then you have a dead-end street that's supposed to have a pulse.
Yeah.
I mean, I I I get it, I get why that's.
Yeah, and we, Bender.
Steams out of.
Yeah, that's, you know, I did. So that's one of the key elements too that the fire chief has reviewed or requested in the past to that um, you know, that if they do, you know, they need the fourteen and a half horizontal fourteen and a half, vertical clearance for the truck to go through. When you get a truck back in there, you gotta get the truck back out.
Correct.
And uh the turnaround accommodation is um is critical. And he didn't mention that in his letter, probably because of the hammerhead uh drive termination down there that you do probably have enough room to turn a truck there. Not that I've ever tried turning a fire truck, but um uh he, he, I would fully expect him to comment on that. And he, he didn't in his letter. Yeah, and I I'm with you on the wording of this section, you know, impossible. I mean, how how many how many sections, sections in either ordinance use that absolute? You know, what? Any thoughts, Tracy?
Well, uh, in some of the other instances, we have um one of the components that we allowed was that the um because of the, the trees and the, and the residents not wanting to change the um I don't know, I can't, my vocabulary is missing here, but um they wanted to retain the chara- the chara- the character of the road and all foliage. And that was really important to residents. And I think that that may be similar in this instance.
Right, and I'm totally sympathetic to that. I probably would have signed one of those letters too, if I, one of the houses there. Um, I just, I I again, I just, I'm, I'm stuck because I think our job is to interpret and enforce the ordinance. And so I I don't want to be an absolutist about it, but I want to be faithful to my oath of office. So um that's what I'm kind of working my way, I'm working my way in and I'll take that. Kim, did you have any thoughts on this based upon other experiences?
Well, I mean, you know, you've got somebody's well in a ladder. That's pretty, that's right next to the road. So that person will have to end up reusing their well. To move, so that they could widen the road, but you know, I mean, like like I said, a lot of, if this if this law was created before two thousand and fifteen and Mike wrote his letter, I give a permit.
Yeah.
Um, because the big deal that falls within Mike, Mike knows his equipment, he knows his trucks. Um, he has in the past uh written, you know, letters requiring pull-offs and sub-tree removal. Um, but this one, he booked it and he didn't state any of that.
And turnaround creation.
Yeah.
Bob, you had your hand up?
Yeah, it was this this needed stuff was a caused by me, uh my lawyer thirty years ago.
Yeah.
Um, I got building permits for two separate lots up there when I got them back in the eighties or nineties, whenever it was. And the town has considered it two lots because they've built me separate tax bills for all those separate lots. And and the permits were issued for two lots and I'll have to build the two cottages on those. One was two acres, the Jerome's law was a little over thirty. Uh, I think it's a technicality that that, you know, that I considered it divided two lots. The town has considered it as two lots, building separate tax bills and so forth for over thirty years. And I think it was a mistake on my lawyer's part of something that that line didn't get recorded in the registry of deeds, but so it's really, it's been two lots and by my consideration and the town's by building permits and so forth. So, you know, it's a toss-up that it even needed to be done.
May I ask about a question?
Yeah.
The town attorney felt that it was actually divided and that line was recorded for the Jerome's and my soul to them and it put it over the two thousand and five danger.
It is the, I I didn't, I wasn't able to understand my, my self-reading that, is the well that's being talked about? Is it between um these folks and and the road?
It's on, it's on the right side of the road, you know, the raised ranch. It's on, it's on the right side of the road, you know, the raised ranch, the first out on the right, yeah, it's right, right there.
Okay, alright, I couldn't say that. I was turning around, alright.
Well, we have. We have board precedents of very similar waiver requests that. I'm sure would have been possible to widen it, but. Is it feasible and really the right thing to do and? I know we're supposed to be interpreting the. Not interpreting the letter, we should be going by the letter and the law of this, but again, um, you know. We've got. Precedent. Of past decisions very similar to those.
Yeah, may I ask a question?
Yep.
Um, waivers, cause this is my first time dealing with this. This is a waiver that will apply to this shed. And, uh, but it has to, it, it's not, it's not like a all time waiver. It, and how does that work?
Yeah, Kim, how does the waiver work?
It works. That, i- it works that any permits issued or requested by the Jerome's. Are gonna be issued a permit.
What happens if one of the other lots?
They're gonna have to come before you.
Yeah. So does the waiver?
For example, if they wanted to build them, later they came in and wanted to build another house. On their lot. Would they have to then deal with the waiver process again or?
No.
But if one of the other.
Yep.
Lots on this road did.
They'll have to go before you, but this language is, I think, gonna change, so.
So we have to, we have to find. Facts and conclusions that then have to be. In a form that will then get recorded. In a registry, is that correct?
No.
No?
This is almost enabling like the waiver request like spot zoning. In some, in some ways.
It's not a dimensional, I mean, I know it's not a dimensional requirement, you guys have no authority to.
No.
Waive dimensional requirements, that's why this is referencing the section sixty eleven for the waiver access is under the subdivision ordinance. Cause you have the authority to do waivers under the subdivision ordinance. And this road review standard is in the ordinance. And your waiver section is in the subdivision order.
According to my MMA manual. State law thirty A, or says that at mercy, four, three, five, three and four, four, oh, six requires the Board of Appeals and the Planning Board to prepare a certificate which can be recorded in the registry of deeds. And provide it to the applicant for recording whenever they grant a zoning variance or a subdivision variance or waiver. In the case of the planning board waiver where a subdivision plan will be recorded, the required information must be noted at the plant. I. That's why I asked that question. Yeah. Because it seems like. You may need to, I'm just, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out what form we need to put this in.
I mean. Usually we're just doing. Some findings and conclusion and on the specific criteria six one.
Sure, I'm not sure they have a state statute. So, I, I don't know, that's why I asked the question because I read that earlier today.
So the, you know, one thing too is, um, you know, if you do flip the page to six two and it says that in. Granting any waiver, the board may stipulate the substitution of such other conditions as in its judgment are necessary. To safeguard the objectives of the requirements so waived.
So for example, that means we could say. We're limiting the waiver to this shed and not to, like, I'd be concerned if they get three acres there. I'd be concerned if at some point they thought, well, let's build another couple of homes or another couple of dwellings or rentals or something or other. And that, and because of that waiver, that greatly increases. The use of that. Um, property. Uh, on that little road.
I mean, we can.
Cause it's a pretty little road and it's not a great turnaround there, I mean, I don't, I apparently Mike's figured it out, I didn't have an easy time today, but that's me, I don't drive.
I mean, if we can condition the waiver.
Right.
Okay. You know, in the past, when we're constructing. Findings um. For in the context of. A waiver. Approval. Um, we're talking about the physical conditions in the site constantly and so. We probably should um. Identify some of the challenges. Of the site that. Complicate. Achieving the. Street design and construction standards of five point one four. And there's, we have a number of things going on.
Specifically the well that is there.
We have a well, we have. A butters not in agreement for the. The right of way um, with the change to fifty feet. You know, we didn't walk the, the full length of the um. We definitely drove it. Of um. Vacation lane um.
Is it, as for what it is, is it a well maintained lane and has shoulders?
Yeah, it's, it's already well maintained, it's reasonably clear, it looks like there's been clearing done. To meet the, the fire chief's um, requests. For emergency vehicle access, but I, I'm talking about things that would complicate. Widening the. The road and, you know, I, who, who knows and, but, you know, there was, as Alan pointed out, I mean, we're next to the quarry and there's. Rumble in these pockets of water coming in, I would be concerned about that. You know, if we were impacting any wildlife habitat in those aquatic. Areas. You know, there, there would definitely have to be additional uh, tree removal. You know, and, you know, I, I think that to the. As um, Tracy pointed out, I think, you know, the appeal of the existing character of the tertiary road. You know, is, is charming and all the. The butters would like it to remain.
Yeah, it, it has a value.
Absolutely. It's a very pretty unique area.
Which is all true, but. I mean, I should have said.
I hear ya. I can't wait till this section is updated. I, could you read some of those back, please?
Uh, some of the conditions you've talked about that would impact uh, the well.
Yeah.
Uh, the butters are opposed to the right of way width change. Wow, oh, it's a well maintained lane. Uh, it meets the safety vehicle access uh, standards necessary. Uh, additional tree removal would be necessary for widening. Uh, and then of course, the appeal of uh, the existing character of the road.
My observation is that the width of that, you might be able to call it a driveway. But it's not sixteen feet. That would be my eyeball guess. It's, it's maybe fourteen, fourteen and a half, fourteen and a half feet.
It feels like it's close.
It's, it is close. It's very close and that's a driveway standard, not a lane. I didn't actually see shoulders to that, it's like the road and then that's kind of, yeah, which it wa- it wasn't hazardous or.
It's at least, at least fourteen wide.
Right, fourteen and a half is a driveway.
Yeah.
So.
But. Yeah. And it would have to be sixteen.
I would think that if we were going to. Grant this with conditions, two of the conditions would be that they maintain. The fourteen point five pipe and width. Clearance for emergency vehicles. And then also we limit it to the scope of. The work that they're. Proposing to do for this project. That we know, I mean, for all the reasons that they talk about. They walk, people walk their dogs there, they don't want it to become a highway, they don't want it to become, you know, a busy thoroughfare, they don't want. It would be if you set this up as a waiver so that at some point in the future, somebody could use that waiver. To, and then further develop the land, just not having to deal with that waiver issue, I think that would be not only a, that would be a disservice to the neighbors actually. To grant something that. Extensive that.
Yeah, I think that's, we're. More than in our right to condition a waiver request.
To, to the, to the non inhabited, inhabitable structure that. Is described as the purpose of the. Party seeking the waiver.
I know we've got a motion.
So, the way you're proposing, let me see if I can do this, um, you're, we are um. Conditioning it on the fact that it only is applicable to the construction of this one structure. And then for this particular lot. Any additional structures that are to be constructed need to come seek additional. No?
No. I, I. I think we could say something about that, you know, it's relative. To the construction of the. Proposed shed or.
Right, and then leave it at that.
Leave it at that.
I mean, I'm not presuming they want to develop it, I'm, I'm just, or, or they are the successors, I'm not. But I would, I'm just, I'm just apprehensive about something that runs with the land that anybody could. Could make much more extensive use of that because we granted that, a waiver that is a little bit. Challenging, I mean.
Well. I'm, I'm just not quite sure how to. Phrase it, phrase it, yeah.
Uh, that, that our condition of the waiver is, first of all, that they maintain. Um, the fourteen and a half foot cle- clearance. Height and width for emergency vehicles. Which is the minimum standards for a driveway, uh, for emergency vehicles. And that the waiver is limited to the.
Pend- is it, has the application been made yet?
To the anticipated. Application to build a shed or, or construct on the proper. Period, that that's all it is.
Can I say so moved?
I think Heidi might once should read that one back.
Well, yes, because they, what has been said so far does not, there are no words actually granting the waiver.
Right, yeah, right, right, correct.
So. We need that, uh, I'm just writing Tracy down, uh, so the condition is that they maintain the fourteen point five foot horizontal and vertical clearance. Uh, necessary for emergency vehicle access and the waiver is limited to the anticipated application to build a shed on the property.
Yes, so she'll move.
Uh, I have Tracy and then you seconded.
Yes.
So, uh, and we want that. Should it not include to grant the waiver with the condition or is it a different motion?
We could, do you want me to make a stab at it? I, I don't mind making the motion, I mean, I.
Yeah, I think in the motion, we need to. Have the findings reference because, you know, re- reads. Yeah, read six point one again, I mean, we're, you know, kind of the broader, you know. Broader reach of the board here, you know, talking about that, you know, when there are special circumstances of topography. Seasonal and similar limited uses regarding traffic, access and safety, neighborhood aesthetics. Or environmental concerns or extraordinary hardships, we should. Definitely have a mo- motion that um, addresses the challenges of. Six point one that would enable a board finding.
Do you want me to try?
Yep.
The board finds.
And I, I key it into six one two.
The board finds, under six point one of the subdivision ordinance. That the. Company in question, property. Now, 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 now you got me lost, sorry, um. I, what I, what I want to say, I guess, is that um.
There are existing special circumstances of.
Well.
That.
Sorry.
I'm, I'm just. Thinking out loud.
Yeah.
That there are. X amount of special circumstances and that uh, and that enabled the board to. Make a recommendation of waiving. Of. Waiving the street design and construction standards of section five point four. About five point one four, thank you. It's like we have to. We have to say, okay, yeah, qualifies for waiver. Because. And then. And if we grant the waiver that, you know, it's gonna. Bring the, it's still bringing the road is brought into compliance as much as is feasible, it's, there's safe access. Bender wrote his letter and then we talked about what the waiver conditions are. I think there's like. Three parts to it we need to address.
So the board hereby. Grants a waiver to. Construct. Uh, a shed. On the subject property. Because.
I think we only need to mention the shed and the permit conditions.
Okay. The board, the board. The board hereby grants a waiver. Having found the following facts. That. This property. Was believed by all parties to have been subdivided. Thirty years ago. Not since two thousand fifteen. Hold on one second. That. Hold on, hold on, uh, all parties. Have been subdivided? Believe that, believe that the property was already subdivided approximately thirty years ago. Long before the effective date of. In of two thousand fifteen. Long before the effective date of, in, of two thousand fifteen.
And due to a recording area error.
Yes, yes.
Omission.
Omission.
Yes. But it was, but it was not completed due to a recording omission of the deed. Further, that this is a small lane with a finite number of homes on it that has a established rural character that the neighbors, the abutting neighbors are opposed to obtaining a fifty foot right of way rather than the existing forty foot right of way. That, semicolon, that moving to fifty feet would, would imperil one of the neighbor's wells. Semicolon. That it would require a substantial change in the character of the neighborhood.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you say that one more?
That it would, that it would require substantial change in the physical chara- I'd say physical characteristics of the neighborhood, including substantial tree cutting. That the Mount Desert Fire Chief has examined the road and has determined it to be sufficient for an emergency vehicle of access so long as fourteen point five feet of vertical and horizontal clearance are maintained.
Hold on just one second.
Yes, gladly. Uh, what am I missing? And that the granting of a waiver would not have the effect of nullifying the purpose of this ordinance or the comprehensive plan or the Luso. Therefore. Um, the word you waited for, therefore, subject to the following conditions. The board I think I'm repeating myself here, whereas I grants the waiver. The board grants a waiver with the condition that it be limited to an application for the construction of a shed. And that the property owners maintain a fourteen and a half foot vertical and horizontal clearance for emergency vehicles.
All right?
Yes.
You want to hear it?
Yes, please.
It's a little scribbling. Uh, the board grants a waiver having found that this property was believed by all parties to have been subdivided approximately thirty years ago, long before the effective date of two thousand fifteen, due to a recording omission of the deed. Further, that this is a small lane with finite mon- uh, a finite number of homes on it that was an established rural, uh, that has an established rural character that, uh, the abutting neighbors are opposed to opening a fifty foot right of way uh, that moving uh, moving to a fifty foot right of way would imperil one of the neighbor's wells, that it would re, or would require substantial change of the physical characteristics of the neighborhood, including tree cutting, that the fire chief has reviewed the road and determined it to be adequate for emergency vehicle access so long as the fourteen and a half foot vertical and horizontal clearance be maintained. And that granting of the waiver would not have the effect of nullifying this ordinance or the comprehensive plan or the Luso. Therefore, subject to the following conditions, the board grants the waiver with the condition that it be what is that word? Of the, uh, limited to construction of a shed and property owners, oh, and that it be with the condition that it be limited to the construction of a shed and property owners maintain the fourteen and a half foot vertical and horizontal clearance for emergency vehicles.
The only thing I would do is like clean up the structure because I said the board will grant at the beginning, and then I said therefore the board will grant. So I would maybe start at the beginning and say, the board finds that, and then say therefore the board grants.
Okay.
Just, because I was, there was a department of redundancy department there when I got into.
And that is, that's been happening for a long one. Uh, and then where? Can you put after fire chief row, put roads? Because it's a cady of pines and vacation lane, which he looked at both. Tree cutting, fire chief has reviewed.
The roads, uh, roads.
Yeah.
Okay, he states it in his letter.
Yes, I can do that. I'm not sure I can do it right here. Andy, uh, the board, let's look here.
Does, does anybody, and let me just ask a question about the condition, the fourteen and a half foot thing. Does anybody anticipate that abutters or other neighbors will object to the task of ongoing maintenance of that? Because it's not, it's not just on their property that we're talking about. He was getting to the property. Um, have you, has, has any expressed concerns about the, I guess the cutting has already been done.
The, the other neighbors have said they want to keep it the way it is.
Right, but I assume that doesn't preclude maintaining an opening to a fire ducts.
Uh, is this the right way to put it in Montana?
Yeah.
Regardless.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, you do have the forty foot. Okay. Thank you. I just don't like to acquire something that actually can't do.
Heidi, were you able to put in the name of both roads? Uh, yes.
Road reference.
Um, if I can get them, I only have the vacation lane here. What is the other one?
Acadia Pines.
Acadia Pines, yeah. All right, so the board finds that this property was believed by all parties to have been subdivided approximately thirty years ago, long before the effective date of two thousand fifteen, due to a recording omission of the deed. Further, that this is a small lane with a finite number of homes on it uh, that has an established rural character that the abutting neighbors are opposed to obtaining a fifty foot right of way that moving to a fifty foot right of way would imperil one of the neighbor's wells that it would, uh, require substantial change um, that it would require substantial change of the physical characteristics of the neighborhood, including tree cutting. And that the fire chief has reviewed the roads and all, uh, to Acadia Pines Road and Vacation Lane and determined them to be adequate for emergency vehicle access so long as uh, the fourteen and a half foot vertical and horizontal clearance be maintained. Uh, okay, maintained. Uh, therefore grants maybe the waiver, the board that, the, they have a, they have a grant, therefore grants. Yes. Um, a waiver. It's just, this is the funky part.
I would say, eh, we, we probably should say a waiver of what? A waiver of the the street requirements of.
In the purpose, maybe, as it stated in the purpose of the agenda?
Right. You're gonna do.
Waiver of, uh, Luso section sixty eleven.
Yeah.
Lots. Section two one one access.
Yes. Of the Luso.
And this is the board here, but grants the waiver of Luso. How did, I, I'm not sure how to word that. But grants the waiver.
A waiver of the requirements of section six B point eleven point two point one.
The Luso section or just?
There's a. Well, you could say, you could say either Luso section sixty point eleven point two point one, or you can say of the land use ordinance. I don't, I don't.
Oh, yeah.
Quick for.
No, no worries there. Uh, okay, so grants the waiver of the requirements of Luso section sixty eleven two one lots on the condition, is that where we want to go then?
Uh, yes.
On the condition.
Conditions.
Where are we at? We also want to speak about the subdivision ordinance six point one one.
Well, we could say that, we could say as uh, the board, um, the board. So before you grant the waiver, you could say the board therefore finds that this provisions of section six point one and six point one one of the subdivision ordinance. Um. No, no, I got lost. That have been met.
I'm not sure I can read it back without being very.
I know, sorry.
No, no worries. It's a virtual conversation. Uh, do you want me to try to start from the start? I'm guessing. Uh, the board finds that this property was believed by all parties to have been subdivided approximately thirty years ago, long before the effective date of two thousand fifteen, due to a recording omission of the deed. Further, uh, that this is a small lane with finite number of homes on it uh, that has an established rural character that, uh, uh, comma, that abutting neighbors are opposed to um, I don't know, opposed to open, um, to opening a fifty foot right of way. I can't read my writing here. That, um, moving to a fifty foot right of way would imperil one of the neighbor's well, that it would require substantial change of the physical characteristics of the neighborhood, including tree cutting. And that the fire chief has reviewed the roads that being Acadia Pines and Vacation Lane, and determine that to be adequate for emergency vehicle access so long as the fourteen point five foot vertical and horizontal clearance be maintained. Um, therefore, um, how about this? Therefore, the board finds provisions of section six one and six one one of the subdivision ordinance to have been met. Do we also want to do six B eleven? Do we need that in there?
No, I don't think you need that.
No.
And the, the board therefore grants the waiver, oh, here it, maybe here it is. The board therefore grants the waiver of the requirements of Luso section sixty eleven two one lots on the conditions that the waiver would not have the effect of nullifying this ordinance or comprehensive plan or Luso, uh. Hmm. There it is, um, that it be limited to the construction of the shed. Do we need that in there, or does the other piece we just did cover that, um? Uh, and property owners maintain the fourteen point fourteen point five vertical and horizontal clearance for emergency vehicle access.
Could you do that again from therefore, the board finds?
Hopefully not.
The waiver.
No, no, no. Uh, therefore, um, okay, therefore, the board finds the provisions of six one and six one one of the subdivision ordinance to have been met. And the board therefore grants the waiver of the requirements of Luso section, section sixty eleven two one lots on the condition that the waiver would not.
No, that, see, that I don't think that belongs in.
Which part?
On the condition that the waiver. That may have been a vestigial thought or something else.
I am not sure. We're not gonna put, we're not gonna place conditions?
Yeah, we are gonna, we are gonna put the conditions there.
Okay.
And that the waiver is granted subject to the following conditions.
All right. Subject to the following.
And those were. Again, that may be a separate sentence, sorry, but.
Uh, or subject to the following conditions and a colon and.
Yeah, upon conditions that, that the parties maintain the fourteen point five.
Yeah, so how we had it written, we're in a kindergarten now. Uh, subject to the following conditions. The waiver would not have the effect of nullifying this ordinance or comprehensive plan or Luso. Oh, yes, okay. Um. I'm sorry.
Straight from six one.
Yeah, that is from six one.
That it be, oh, uh, that, uh, it be limited to the construction of a shed and that property owners maintain the fourteen and a half foot vertical and horizontal clearance for emergency vehicle access.
Yeah, the whole thing about, um, um, not of the effect of nullifying the purpose of the ordinance, that's one of the, our findings. That's like, like a finding of law.
Okay.
Right, that, that, that.
And that we've already stated?
Um, no, but it's not a finding of fact. It's like a finding, a conclusion that, you know, like we found all the facts that, that people thought it was.
Okay.
Rural character and all that stuff at the beginning, um. And that therefore, as it were, as we're finding, a finding of law is that we can grant the waiver because.
It does not have the effect of nullifying.
Yeah.
Okay, how about finds the provisions of section six one, six one one of the subdivision ordinance have been met? And the board find, and the board finds.
Or you could say, or you could say, including that the waiver does not have the effect of which is taken, language taken exactly directly from the lifted from the ordinance.
Including that, I'm sorry, can you say that one?
Sure. Including that the waiver does not have the effect of nullifying. Sure, including that the waiver does not have the effect of nullifying. The purpose. Of this ordinance. The comprehensive plan.
Okay.
For the Luso. Land use ordinance at the time.
And you said, I just to double check of nullifying the ordinance or comp plan or Luso, I thought I heard purpose.
Does not have the effect of nullifying the purpose. Of the ordinance, the comprehensive plan.
Alright. Want me to try again? That was Gail's motion.
That was definitely Gail's.
You have findings of fact and conclusions alone, I'm just trying to get it.
We need a second, or do you want me to read it again?
I'll second it.
Alright, any further discussion? Uh, do we do it? Alright, all those in favor? Opposed? Congratulations. And the most important, important question I have for the, um, for the DeRomes is, uh. What's the four-legged, um, member of the public there, what's?
Looks like a French bulldog.
Yeah, what's? Her name?
That is, um, Tank.
We'll make sure he's in the minutes. And another one. Oh, fantastic. Well, make sure they're in the minutes, I D. Okay, uh, I just had one other thing under, under other, um. I've had these code of ethics things we have to sign for Claire. We didn't because, it's because of the everything.
And then we have a second other too.
Yeah, so just if you guys don't mind, just sign these and.
No, well, we just did it, cause you just.
Yeah, you just did.
Did not Alan and Gail do them?
Yeah, we did, yeah, I already, well, I already.
I, I said that to Claire and she gave them to me anyhow, so I don't.
What is today, the eleventh?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Thank you for surviving that, Bob.
Not I'm signing. She would email me this if, if I asked.
I mean. I mean, I, I'm signing the disclosure that I agreed to readily disclose any conflict and that I.
You guys done with us? Thank you so much.
Yes, we are, thank you.
Happy holidays.
Yes, happy holidays. Do I give these to Claire?
I'll give them to her.
Right. The only one I don't have is Meredith, of course. Yeah, and then.
Section.
I have to give a person driving lessons. Alright, from India, from India, from India. Someone who just started working at the lab. They, they just bought a car and we went to different car dealers. And I had to give my license and drive the car as they sat in the back and I chauffeured him around. Oh, not this one, oh, I think I like that one.
They find a place to live?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, that's simple.
Yeah, have they ever driven in the snow?
They'd never seen the snow until what we just got last week.
They got a really gentle look at beautiful snow. Marshmallow snow, I am.
There's those. Well, under other the, yeah. Town about desert may comprehensive plan kickoff meeting.
Well, that was done, this was, this was this presentation.
Yeah.
And then, um, there was another, it's another one. And, um, I spoke to Claire. Who asked if I was going to be the liaison to the comprehensive plan. And I told her I would agree to do that.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Select board voted their liaison on, I don't know.
I think we should vote our liaison on, so. Alan, would you like to make a motion about Tracy being the planning board's liaison to the?
I make a motion. To that Tracy would be. Plan, plan update board representative.
All those in favor? You get the gold star Tracy.
Well, let's see how I do.
Doesn't mean others can't attend the meetings.
That's right, everyone's.
Okay. Where it's still.
So there was this other one that was on the nineteenth, there's a second meeting.
Then we received.
We are meeting next. Five o'clock. Five o'clock.
Meet and greet on January tenth.
I'll eat the cookies you don't.
Good, I, I, I would get, that's my mode these days.
Almost.
I make a motion to, no, not yet.
No, go for it.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I should I get that?
All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Thanks.